I'll tell you this, they just opened their third flagship store. It's over off of Henderson and 75.
When people ask you-
It just opened Friday.
Did you go?
No, no, no. I haven't gone yet.
My advice is when people ask you where you got them, say the Amazon. And like-
Well, they're custom made.
And you're like, well, yeah, you said, you caught the python that-
Yeah, no, they wouldn't believe that.
And you took it to somebody who made it. Why not?
I can tell some good stories. Sometimes that one would be hard to swallow. All right, guys, are we, council, are we ready?
Yes, sir.
Lisa, are you ready?
Sit down.
Okay.
Just trying to adjust his camera so we'll be all right now we can see everybody.
Okay. Hi, Mom. Football been very, very good to me. Oh, we're not doing the NFL commercials, sorry. All right, the time is 6:30. I'll call this meeting to order. First off will be the invocation.
Would you like to leave us in prayer?
Sure. Good evening. Well, thank you for today, and thank you for serving this community. And for us too. Thank you for today. Close down, serve this community. Serve our community. You've got it, you've got it. This is it this evening.
Amen. All right, if you'll join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor to Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas state, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
All right. And as I say in every council meeting, rules of decorum will be in effect. The next thing up is citizens' comments. Are you filling one out? You have a com- comment? Okay.
As I say, I think the council's doing a fabulous job.
Well, you know. You just say that because you're here.
That's true.
All right, if there's no citizens' comments for this evening, citizens' comments will be closed. First thing up is approval of minutes. Looking for a motion on approval of September 24th, 2019 meeting minutes? Wow, that's a mouthful.
I make a motion that we approve the September 24th, 2019 minutes.
All right. I'm sorry, go ahead.
As written.
As written. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on it? If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, show that unanimous. Moving on to the next thing, 6.1. It's going to be a public hearing with discussion and action regarding requests by Anthony Crowley on behalf of Ty Davenport, seeking approval of a final plat for Davenport Estates, 6.188 acres, part of Rockwall CAD parcel ID number 11452, K Latham survey, tract 67, generally located on Smith Road, south of FM 550. You what?
I don't know.
Okay. Mr. Crowley, you are up.
Yes. This item is a final plat for the Davenport Commission, I guess, for purposes. We all approved the preliminary plat, I guess, a month, six weeks ago.
That sounds about right, yes, sir.
It went to the planning commission last week. We had a meeting, we didn't have a forum, but we had a special meeting we went to last week. The planning commission recommended approval of the final plat, five to nothing. There are a set of conditions on there that probably they've most all been met, but the attorney needs to look at them. When we went to the planning commission literally that day, one of the conditions, but I could have wanted the engineer to review it. And I think in the last few days, Lisa and I have been having some discussion with the applicant about subject systems and the height of the ban. But I think we're there, and they're going to do one more final check from the engineer. So, like I said, staff, we recommend approval of subject and the four conditions listed above. I don't think you need to read them or anything. Just make it like to that, but then the planning commission will say.
Okay. Is there any questions for Mr. Crowley on this? Okay.
Hello, sir.
All right, thank you, sir. It's now open for public hearing. Is anybody here to speak on that particular agenda item?
Yes, we're here for it.
I'm sorry?
I'm here for it. I don't want to mess around and make a mistake.
Okay, and that's fine, that's fine. You can be here for it, but you don't have to talk. I get it. If there is nobody here for the public hearing on it, the public hearing is now closed. All right. Now I'm looking for a motion to approve.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the final plat as noted with the conditions listed above.
Okay. Do I have a second? I've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on it? If not, all in favor to approve it with the conditions that Mr. Crowley had described in his presentation? Say aye.
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 All right, show that unanimous. All right, now if my technology will quit playing its game, we'll get to the next one. All right, the next thing, 6.2, presentation by Dan Jackson regarding or representing Wildan Financial Discussion Regarding 2019 Waste Water Rate Study and Financial Forecast. Mr. Jackson, if you'll push the button on there, turn that thing on. That way we can hear you.
Thank you.
You're up. You are the star.
Thank you very much, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Dan Jackson. I am Vice President of Wildan Financial Services. We're the company that you selected to do a rate study and long-term financial plan for your wastewater utility. I'm here to present to you a very brief presentation that's going to go over the results of our analysis and present you with our recommendations for setting your wastewater rates for the future. This is an important topic because as the city continues to grow and as you continue to add accounts to your wastewater utility, it's very important that your utility continue to be run in a professional manner and that you allow the and that you are able to recover the costs that are involved in providing wastewater service. Many utilities such as yours do these kind of long-term financial plans, particularly growing communities, because you are facing a bit of a crossroads here and that your utility is going to be very different five or 10 years from now than it is today. So it's very important that you stay on top of the changes that are occurring and that you make sure that you do collect sufficient revenues, not only to cover all of your operating expenses, but to ensure that in the future, when certain other revenue sources run out, you have the ability to replace those. So, do I have a clicker or anything, or?
No, I'm here.
Oh, Lisa, you're my clicker? I'm just going to talk real briefly about rates in general because I think it's very important for decision-makers like yours to understand what's going on in the marketplace and what factors are going into the increase in cost of wastewater service. Then I'm going to talk a little bit about your customers and the growth that you're anticipating to incur over the next decade. Then I'll talk about your current and your forecast costs, and then I'll present you the proposed rate plan. So, next chart. This is a difficult topic for people to address. Nobody wants to pay more for anything at any time for any reason. Wastewater rates are no different than anything else. But what is happening in the wastewater industry? Well, the average utility has been increasing its wastewater rates 5% to 6% a year across the state of Texas and across the United States. As a matter of fact, the American Water Works Association forecasts that water and wastewater rates in general are going to triple in the next 15 years. Now, why is that? Why does it cost any more to flush a toilet today than it did five years ago? And why is it going to cost any more to flush that toilet five years from now? Well, one of the primary reasons for that is that you try to run your utility like a business. You want the rates that you charge for the service to cover the costs of providing that service. Well, guess what? Due to inflation, cost of everything goes up by at least 3% a year. So it's reasonable to expect that over time wastewater costs are going to increase. But also, many of the costs that go into the provision of wastewater service are costs that are completely beyond your control. Things like inflation, things like the need to maintain and repair your system. But for the city of McLennan-Chisholm, one of the most important factors is the wastewater increases from your provider, North Texas Municipal Water District and the city of Rockwall. North Texas is expecting very significant increases in the cost of wastewater treatment service. You send all your wastewater to North Texas, they treat it, and they take care of it, and it's sent through Rockwall. And as they increase their costs, you've got no choice but to pass those costs through to your ultimate rate payer. And finally, what is the very important aspect in continuing your financial stability is the customer growth that you're going to incur. Growth is good for a utility, but it's only good if you properly manage that growth and you enable and because with every additional account comes additional cost, and that additional cost has to be covered in the rates that you charge. Okay, what do you charge? Well, you've got a very small system here. Even though the population of the city is about 1,500 to 2,000 people right now, you only have about 300 to 350 wastewater accounts under your control in one basic subdivision. Right now, you charge those customers $55 a month. You charge a flat charge for those customers. You don't charge a volumetric rate. This is very common for a utility your size. The primary reason why it's a good idea just to charge a single monthly charge is that most utilities that have water service and wastewater service charge for wastewater service based on water volumes. Well, you don't have the water service. It's other providers that provide that. So it would be very difficult, if not impossible, to try to get volume data from the water providers. So it's easier, better, more efficient, and better administratively just for you to charge a minimum charge. So you charge $55 for your customers. So how does that compare? Well, the average customer who uses wastewater service uses somewhere between 5,000 and 7,500 gallons a month. That's what a typical residential customer puts into the system. Now, obviously, some are more, some are less, but the average is about 7,500 gallons. This chart right here compares you to many of your neighbors. As you can see, you are a little higher than some. You're higher than cities like Garland and Allen and Wiley, but you're actually lower than many others. You're lower than Frisco and Mesquite and Princeton and Royce City. So as you can see, the charge of $55 a month is certainly not out of proportion to what utilities charge for wastewater service here in the Dallas-Fort Worth area. You're right about where you would expect to be. $55 a month, about an average charge. Okay. One of the key factors in doing a long-term financial plan is not so much where your utility is today, but where is it going tomorrow? It looks like you're going to have some pretty significant growth in this major subdivision over the next 10 years. As you can see, you have just a little bit under 400 accounts right now. You're anticipating to grow to as many as 1,000 accounts 10 years from now. We're anticipating and forecasting that you're going to grow by about 70 to 80 new accounts every year. That is a very important statistic because not only is every new account a new monthly charge, but also you're getting some development fees for those new customers, and that is helping right now, supporting the cost of wastewater service. This chart right here shows you how much you're paying for wastewater service. Your utility costs about $441,000 a year right now to operate. This pie chart shows the division of those costs. As you can see, the lion's share of it is treatment. That is no different from any other utility that I work with. Virtually every wastewater utility I work with has a pie chart that's very similar to that, that's going to show that the majority of charges are due to wastewater treatment. Now, that's particularly important because of the fact that North Texas is looking at some very significant increases in the coming years. And so that 53% is probably going to grow as a percentage in the future. As you can see, your collection and your developers' fees are the lion's share of the remaining part, with your maintenance and operation costs making up the rest of it. Next chart? Unfortunately, you got to just toggle all of that. So, like I said, the benefit of doing a long-term financial plan is that it enables you to look not so much at where your utility is today, but where is it going to be tomorrow? And you can develop a financial plan that enables you to recover all those costs in the future. Well, what's going to happen over the next several years? Well, most of your contractual operating expenses are going to increase by about 3% a year. Cost of everything goes up by 3%, so a good financial plan has to take that into consideration. But the biggest impact for you and your rate payers is the fact that right now, North Texas is looking at increases of as much as 9% a year in the cost of wastewater treatment. There's a lot of reasons for that. Costs a lot of money to build and maintain a treatment facility. They've got a lot of environmental regulations that they need to meet. They need to meet the demands of growth. This is not a criticism of North Texas at all. As a matter of fact, this is really not out of the ordinary. North Texas may not increase their rates by that much. They've been kind of all over the map in terms of how much they think their costs are going to go up. But we do a lot of work with North Texas. We work for most of the cities that are member cities of North Texas, and that's what we're hearing. We're hearing that you need to expect 8% to 9% annual increases. Also, it's very important to understand that one of the big sources of revenue you get right now is your developers' fees. You charge a $3,000 fee to every new connection that comes into your system. Of that $3,000 fee, about 60% of it goes back to the developer to reimburse that developer for the infrastructure that they put into the ground. But the city keeps the other 40%. That's great. That's enabled you to keep your rates a little bit lower, but that fee is going to run out at some point. When that division is built out, that $3,000 fee goes away, and so your wastewater rate has to be to the point where it can replace that lost revenue. Okay? This is your forecast cost to service by, if you don't mind my walking over here. As you can see, the bar chart shows your total costs and the current here going up for the next 10 years. The blue portion is your all expenses, the green portion is North Texas's costs, and the red portion is your developer's. Looking, you can see what the biggest impact is. Look out there at that green portion of the bar there over the next 10 years. Now, that's due to two reasons. One, rate increases, and two, the fact that you're going to be sending more volume over the next several years. But one of the great things about wastewater utilities is that no of these expenses are going to incur in the next several years, so you can start planning for it now. By planning for it now, you can gradually phase in the rates that are necessary to meet the North Texas costs and to replace the developer fee revenue when it goes away. And that minimizes the impact on your rate payers. So, utilities are very consistent, they're very constant, and that's why financial planning is going to be so beneficial for utilities. Next chart? And for those of you who love numbers, this is the same chart, but in numerical format. As you can see right now, you're giving, you're paying for Texas about $235,000 a year. By 2020, I'm going to stay below $1 million. There you go. It's going to go up by 400% over the next 10 years. Again, combination of rate increases and volume increases. Your operating expense is going to go up a little bit, but that's definitely what's driving the bus here. What's really driving the bus in terms of your cost increases is what's going to occur in North Texas. Look at your developer revenues. Well, your developer revenues go away after 15 years, but so does the revenue from it too. So, your top, the net revenue requirement that you need to meet definitely your rate payers is only $215,000 today, but it's going to be over $1 million dollars here ten years from now. So. What we're going to recommend the city consider doing is implementing a five-year rate plan. We recommend multi-year rate plans for most of our clients. One rate, one vote, one ordinance, five annual rate increases on January of each year. Or, I'm sorry, October of each year. The reason why this is beneficial is that it sets sort of the default option in place for the city. I've been doing rate consulting for about 30 years, done it for about 200 cities around the country, including 90 cities in Texas. One of the things I've learned is that rate payers like gradual annual increases because most rate payers aren't intelligent enough to realize that cost of everything goes up over time, and so it's reasonable to expect that your bill is going to trend up a little bit. What rate payers don't like is big sudden increases. They don't like to open up their bill and see it twice as much as it was the month before. And so, the benefit of a long-term plan is that you can gradually phase in the rate increases over the next five years that will keep your fund solvent and will enable you to meet the increased costs. Now, your fund didn't quite make it this year because you didn't quite have as much growth as you anticipated. Well, economy's picking up, growth rates picking up, the building permits are picking up, and so we think that you're going to hit those growth numbers in the next couple of years. You never really know. I mean, nothing is certain in life except death and taxes, of course, but as long as that growth comes in, we think you can keep to a series of very modest rate adjustments over the next five years. Next chart? The other X factor is North Texas. You set the rate plan in place, and if you set a five-year plan in place, you always have the ability to go back and adjust it at a future year. So if North Texas come in and says, oh, we were just kidding, we're not going to keep doing these rate increases, we're going to keep it flat. Well, that, the probability of that happening is about probably the same as the Easter Bunny coming, but, you know, I used to believe in the Easter Bunny, so who knows? It could happen. If North Texas's increases aren't as much, you have the ability to go back and adjust your rate accordingly. But the default option, we would recommend that you set in a gradual series of adjustments. Basically, we recommend 5% adjustments in your rate plan each of the next five years. So, your current rate of $55, we recommend pulling up like to $57.75. That's a $2.75 increase beginning in January 2020. Now, October 2020, we recommend a $2.8 asset increase, followed by $3 a month each year after that. The average water and sewer utility is increasing its rates 5% to 6% a year. So, these, this rate plan basically is consistent with what most utilities in the state of Texas are recommending. This rate plan also has an additional advantage. It enables you to take advantage of the hook. North Texas is looking at 9% increases, but here we're only looking at 5% increases. You're able to cover that other facet because you're getting, you're able to recover the benefit of the additional growth and the additional revenue. Again, another benefit of doing these kind of long-term financial plans. We don't recommend the plan go beyond five years because in all honesty, with financial planning, once you get beyond five years, you're kind of throwing darts at a dartboard. I mean, who knows what's going to be happening in 2026 or 2027? But, if you go to the next chart? We think that you're probably going to need similar increases in the next several years. And as you can see, if the connection fees go away after 15 years, you're going to need slightly higher increases. But if you do these annual adjustments that you're going to need in the next five years, you would only need to do marginal increases. Let's say the connection fees went away tomorrow. That is, if that happened, you would have to do about 40% to 45% increase immediately. Now, people might like that. But if you gradually phase in the adjustments over the next five to six years, that way, when those fees go away, the increase is going to be much less significant. Next chart? Okay? This rate plan has an additional advantage too. It's going to enable you to increase your fund balance. Right now, your fund balance is about $300,000. It's going to take it up to about $500,000 over the next 10 years. That's very important because one of the things that you always need to expect when you run a utility is you need to expect the unexpected. You need to expect that there's going to be repairs, there's going to be unexpected expenses, there's going to be weather issues, there's going to be growth issues, and so it's very good to have money in reserve to handle these kind of unexpected expenses. $500,000 or so, from our analysis, indicates to be about an appropriate level for a utility your size, and this plan will get you there. So, on to my last chart. It's obviously never easy to ask rate payers to pay more under any set of circumstances, but we strongly recommend that you give very serious consideration to this rate plan. We make this recommendation because we do think it would be very beneficial to put this plan in place. Now, you might think to yourself, what, how in the world could it possibly be beneficial to increase wastewater rates? How can that benefit anybody? Well, it benefits people for the following reasons. One, you've got a good utility right now. It enables you to continue to run this utility on a standalone basis. Many cities do not have rates in place that don't cover their costs. So what it means is they're using general fund revenue to subsidize the utility fund. This rate plan will enable you to run that fund independently. It will cover the increased costs of North Texas. Look, North Texas is going to raise their costs whether you increase your rates or not. So, this plan will enable you to pass through those additional costs. It will keep your utility financially healthy. It'll give you a good, solid reserve to fund needed improvements. And finally, it will ensure that rate payers are only paying what it costs to provide that service. One of the benefits of running a public utility like what you run is that you don't have stockholders, you're not trying to make a profit, you're not paying dividends. All you're asking your rate payers to do is cover what it's costing you. And these gradual increases, while regrettable, are only going to go to covering the cost of providing that service. We strongly recommend that you give serious consideration to adopting a five-year wastewater plan in accordance with our recommendations. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
What degree of area, so from 20, from January 2023?
Mm-hmm.
And what kind of bill shape cover are you looking at as far as your percentages? Do you think it will have? Would you expect large change or just minor adjustments in the area about your?
I would expect only very minor changes. The biggest factor being North Texas. Now, two years ago, North Texas told their water customers they were going to increase rates by 10% a year. This year, they said, never mind, it's only going to be 3% to 4%. So, right now, we're sort of planning for the worst and hoping for the best. We're taking the worst-case scenario, the 9% increases that have been whispered and discussed in the marketplace. But I will tell you, if North Texas comes back and says, hey, never mind, we're only going to increase wastewater rates by 3% to 4%, you could probably cut that rate plan at least in half. So, like any good growing utility, I think it's important for you to review this every year or two, but the default option being just kind of keep the five-year plan in place and leave yourself the opportunity to come back and revise it if things break in your favor. Another thing is if you get more growth than you expected. 70 to 80 accounts a year is solid, but you know what? It wouldn't, the economy's white-hot right now. I wouldn't be surprised if you, you know, if you had 150 to 200 accounts next year, that certainly could happen. So, it's always good to maintain that. But I would consider this 5% increases to be basically worst-case scenario.
So what happens if we have a slowdown in growth?
Um, I think that only, if you still grow by 40 to 50 to 60 accounts, you'll be okay because there's a little cushion in the rate plan. But if you get below 30 to 40 accounts, then you might have to come back in and take another look at it.
Meaning you can raise their rates again?
Yes. Mm-hmm. It's always, yeah, it's always possible. Now, of course, you've got some options. One thing is that this plan builds up your reserve. You could choose not to build up the reserve and just sort of absorb it. So, that becomes a policy decision on your part. If revenues don't come in as expected, if growth doesn't come in as expected, your options are either do a supplemental rate increase or maybe not do as much of the buildup of your reserve. It's up to you, and I would say, you know, let's cross that bridge when we get to it.
And when does North Texas determine their rating?
Generally, in March to April of each year. Now, it's my understanding they're going to come in and talk to y'all in a couple of weeks. Now, remember, I mean, things can change pretty rapidly with North Texas. And so, they were talking 10% water increases all the way up until about April of this year. Then all of a sudden, it was, never mind. So, I'd be very interested to hear what they say, what they tell you. Unfortunately, I can't make that meeting. I can't be here for that meeting as much as I'd like to. I've got another commitment that night. But it would be very interesting to see what they say about what their perception is.
William, do you have anything? Actually, my question was going to prove my question. Mr. Jackson, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you all. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Counsel, because we are going to hear from North Texas here in the next meeting or two, I'm sure, 20 out of 24.
20 seconds.
Okay. Then there's no action on this at this time because we've heard the other presentation. We get the other, their side of what they're thinking, and so at this point, there's no action for this one.
One, I got one final comment. If they come in and say, hey, we're not doing 9%, you know, it's going to be 2% to 3%, then I'd be happy to rerun the numbers for you.
Okay. Now, let me ask you this. That being said, Mr. Jackson, you know, we got that reserve, and this is forecast, you know, there's always the possibility of an economic downturn in real estate and all that stuff. Not understanding always how things operate in that part of the arena, would it not be wise for us to just leave it at that even if there was the start of a downturn?
Yeah, I think there's a lot of merit to that.
More houses kept in because it helps build that reserve, or what happens if we have a downturn later on, it's a lot worse than we expect.
Yeah, there's a lot of merit to that. It's plan for the worst and hope for the best. And 5% is very much in line with what other utilities are paying. I just did the rate study for Rockwall, and that's what we recommended for them. In fact, the wastewater increases were higher than that. And so, most of the other cities I work for, Plano, I work for Plano, Frisco, McKinney, Allen, all of those cities are looking at similar to larger increases. So, I think it would make a lot of sense to keep the plan in place, and, because that's a- a, that's a great thing about running a public utility. If you recover more revenues than what your expenses are, it's not like some stockholder profits. It's just money that you have in reserve that goes for future repairs. So it goes to the benefit of the ratepayers under any set of circumstances. So I would consider that.
And that cost of this whole projection on it, that only affects at this time residents of Sonoma Verde, is that right, Lisa?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, for overall, for the overall city, it's not an effect, it's just for those of us that live in that community.
Right. That's correct.
Just want to make sure everybody's clear, not thinking that, oh my gosh, everybody else is going to start seeing some increase too. Just for us in that, that subdivision at this time.
We get another subdivision and they tie the sewer, will we agree with that?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right. We will move on to six point three. Discussion and action regarding consideration of a letter of engagement with Murray Pascal in Cape Town, P.C. for auditing City of McLean and Chisholm financial statements for fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen for a price not to exceed eleven thousand dollars. Ms. Lisa, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, sir. Securing audit services is a standard practice along with the fiscal year. We just want to get on the monitor schedule, which is why we're asking you to consider this engagement letter now. The audit is expected to begin in December, so reports back to you in the later March, beginning of March. City mentioned a fifteen thousand dollar audit services. The specific proposal here is for eleven thousand dollars. The purpose of the audit is to examine the city's financial statements, to obtain reasonable assurance that financial statements are true to air, audited financial reporting, misappropriation of assets, and the violation of laws. Those are the things we need to go for. Cape Town, audit of Cape Town has been doing audits since two thousand twelve. There are no requirements to rotate audit early, follow business, there are best practices to do so every few years. I think at the very end of that point, we talked about it a little last year, we took some bids and the whole process from District Four, so we have stuff that we can do with that. This year, due to adding Phase Two of Sonoma Verde, I'm suggesting it's probably not the best time to switch, but we're actually looking at it next year. I think we just kind of need a baseline for Sonoma before we start switching over to New York City, so they kind of have something to look at. So I'm suggesting we speak with this firm for this year.
All right. Do I have a motion, uh, on this one, to engage this company?
I have a motion to, uh, report.
With the letter of engagement?
Yeah.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I've got a motion of second. Is there any discussion on it? If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Show that unanimous. All right, moving on to the second one. Six point four, discussion and action regarding consideration of a letter of engagement with Murray Pascal in Cape Town, P.C. for auditing Sonoma Verde Public Improvement District financial statements for fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen for a price not to exceed six thousand dollars. Ms. Lisa, turn it over to you again.
Really did, I've been looking at the same things as far as evidence of air, project management, things like that. So the purpose of it is the same, it's just zero to the pit, that's what it is. We actually, even though there's a cost of six thousand in there, that is actually reimbursed a little back to the city, so we'll pay, we'll write the checks to Mr. Cape Town, but then we build the pit for us, we did initially develop that.
Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion on that one.
I want a motion to, uh, report.
Another letter, okay. All right, sec, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, if there's not any, is there any discussion on it?
Just one question. Is, is it mandatory to do an audit of them?
It's mandatory that it's certainly wise. Do we do that?
Yeah. I think it's wise with all of the...
Especially since we've got to switch administrators.
Yeah, with switching administrators, everybody not fully understanding the pits and the costs and the, everything that's doing, I think it's good to keep everybody on an even keel knowing, hey, this is, this has all been done correctly, this is what the costs are, this is what we have.
There is care, there's nothing that needs to be made.
Yes.
Why they should be.
Because it's been such a heated subject with residents, especially in that subdivision.
Yeah, plus just in case anything happens, we'll switch over, want to catch up.
Absolutely.
Who's the company years ago? Did it with Murray Pascal here?
Since two thousand twelve.
Two thousand twelve, seven years in. All right, if there's no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Show that unanimous. All right, moving on. Discussion and action, or excuse me, discussion and consideration for a resolution to designate an official newspaper, an alternate official newspaper for required public notices. Ms. Lisa?
Yes, sir, this is also House Board Act as well. Every year, on fiscal year, the Texas Department of Public Utilities and the city shall consider a public official newspaper. So that's what this is. Roble Mayor Van Ander, this is also our manager here in Long Island. A year or so ago, we had an issue with basically this polished town, so he also does the alternate public official paper. So what this does is it just keeps gas for from last year and wants the Roble Mayor Van Ander is our official paper, the local papers, and that also does news.
I'll entertain a motion on that.
I want a motion to, uh, report.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion?
I got some discussion. Looking over, looking over the, what we spent on the Dallas Morning News last year, is there any other alternative newspapers that we could use as an alternate that don't cost as much?
There is, probably. They have to, complication in what's considered being polished in your area, there's not a particular definition for those sort of things. I know those two are the ones that I see that we require an official paper.
There, there's elements laid out in the government code, I think somewhere around twenty-two sixty-one, somewhere, something like that. I can't remember exactly where it is. But it's laid out in the government code. They're required to, to, to have, I think it's four elements that they have to meet. So, like Lisa's saying, not every periodic was going to be, uh, to meet all four of those.
Well, it's unfortunate. I mean, twenty, twenty-two years ago, twenty-four years ago, we still, we had two Dallas. When it was a little more competitive, we, we, you know, we probably could have done something.
We, we don't use the morning news, it's, it's something really critical as far as time. Couple of times, Roble Mayor, we just, you know, got that, it's got to be in your office too, you said, uh, we had, so, some of them is unexpected, or some of them is, say, hit it off, or someone's just got to be polished, pray, and they're the ones that, most of the time, these are all the way.
They're just on, there are second choices in critical issue, or times of, times of doubt.
I don't know, we used it about eight or four times last year, a thousand, you know, the times as well. Um, you know.
All right, if there's no other discussion, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Show that unanimous.
All right, moving on. Discussion and action considering approval of November eleventh, twenty nineteen Veterans' Day Memorial Program and legal cost participants and agenda. Um, Ms. Kipper?
Yes, I just wanted to give a rundown on the Veterans Day ceremony that's set for the eleventh of November at eleven o'clock at our memorial. Uh, everyone has got a little bit of a role to play and it's, it was highlighted in the attached documentation, but Beer Shorter Please will be running the ceremony for us. Lisa has sent out invitations to our local officials and we already do have a positive that Senator Hall and his wife will be attending. So that's, um, the commander of Future Post One-One-Seven, Mark Keppe, will be doing the, uh, uh, normal official Veterans Day ceremony with local veterans participating. So I've been rounding up volunteers for that. Uh, and then we'll have the reef landing ceremony, which you and I will officiate. The, um, the cost, the only cost so far, and the only cost is the reef and the stand, and that's a hundred and nineteen dollars, and I've ordered that, and then cookies and water. So I, I've determined the cost is going to be less than a hundred and thirty dollars, a hundred and fifty dollars. So I would like to get, go ahead for that with you. Um, I, I don't see using any other city resources with the exception of the microphone. We have a podium, the American Legion has a podium, a mobile podium that we'll put out there. Uh, the bricks will be in place, so we'll be doing the commemoration at that time. And then I've also got three proclamations that I'd like for you and I to do, and I'm not really ready to discuss that in public, because I don't have the light on.
That's fine.
Okay, so.
Lisa, do we have to, do, can we, can she afford on those costs without us having to do it for that amount?
We have funds for special men, it's already, you know, built into the veterans. So if you want to do the action, but you want to endorse what she wants to do.
Yeah, we can, I, I have no problem with it.
Whether you contact our local response, if you're, if you're going to do it, we do our...
Well, I figured it's just a, you know, a case of water, it's, you know, what, ten dollars and, or not even, and some cookies, because it's, it's not there for, we're not there to feed them because it's just a very short ceremony. And, uh, I'm sure I can get away with spending less than twenty dollars for it.
I don't have an issue with it. Um, when you get the, the expenses in the budget, William, get a green light from me.
Thank you.
Um, Lisa, move, move forward, she has our endorsement to continue on with that.
Thank you.
Um, if you know of any veterans in our community that are not aware of it, or, you know, not everybody's on social media, um, please let them know. This, this is about them, it's not about us.
And we have it on our Facebook page already, so you can share what their church is right now, and one church is already sharing it with their church to get.
And, and I'll be real honest with you, even if you know veterans that don't live in our community, that want to come, this is about veterans. Yes, this is on our city, that's important, not our veterans locally, but it's really about veterans overall. So if you know veterans from anywhere else, please invite them to come. You know, or we're not, we're not going to turn away any veteran.
Or just buy more cookies?
Yeah, I have no problem with that at all. That, a lot of coffee, because as I get older, I like more and more coffee. Um, all right, we're done with that one. The next one, six point seven, discussion and action regarding consideration of appointing two council members to a comprehensive plan review committee to work in collaboration with two appointed planning and zoning commissioners for the purpose of reviewing comprehensive plan, recommending areas of focus and identifying a process for updating the plan. Lisa?
Council discussed during the better planning process about the possibility of doing a comprehensive update, and at that time decided not to find a full update and council kind of negotiated our efforts for individuals, uh, groups, channels, whatnot, and kind of, whatever, things, but P and Z wants to help, we kind of discussed it a little bit, and it's, it's a little bit overwhelming, probably on time here, but it's a little overwhelming for them to know where exactly to start. And so, we'll kind of talk about it P and Z the other night, as if we could get a couple of P and Z members, a couple of council members to form a sort of subcommittee and just kind of get the thing started, just kind of get it going rolling. And we're thinking at this point that we may not have to do it with overhaul, but there may be three or four specific areas that we want to just focus on, and think, kind of just narrowing on where it applies, then maybe we can change it back to P and Z and actually do some more hard fast work on things. Uh, but we kind of need to, we need to set that in place in areas and focus wherever there's throwing a big clean brush and standing at us.
I agree with you a hundred percent.
Yeah, I was just going to say that if we pick out little pieces and stuff, okay, well, that long ago, I was up here saying, my, my, I, I said the same thing, I guess last Thursday, the two oh five should be eight hundred pound umbrella, because we're going through town, so we have two thousand pound umbrella in five years.
Absolutely.
And five years, also five years is not far off the left, or that, that's probably the most important, but, but there should be things like, you know, I gave them a, the disprove of the surgery last week, and that vision statement is a comprehensive plan. And Plano had a very good exercise, I'd say, anything about, you know, it's all different now, but they went through another exercise, what is a vision, what, you know, if you are a corporation, uh, you're a business, and so, you know, it is, but it is, and businesses have vision statements, which aren't vision statements, vision statements, mission statements how you accomplish a vision. So, then it's, it's, it is overwhelming for, for them, you know, I've been doing it for a long time, I just throw a lot of charge and all their stuff, but I, I enjoy this thing, I was on Lisa. If, if, if we can do this on the same nights that we eat here, or, you know, I don't know about charging, that, because it's fun and it is, I enjoy doing this and it's a great thing to have road.
Absolutely.
Well, do you have a vision, like one or two sessions?
Well, you know, I, I guess, you know, make, make energy sessions a bigger idea, you're willing to go a certain direction, you know? Are we going to do things, there's some things we need to look at, and that's what I should do.
Yeah, because you got to get that vision statement before you...
Right, right, and it is, you know, you can kick the two oh five hand down the road, there's a whole lot of things that have come there, but it's still, you know, the stocks, next, I'll change the line, closer shot, it's still going to happen, and, and that's like, but then, you've got commercials owning right now, it's this way, after two oh five was going to be this way. So what are we going to do? Are we going to have a long stretch again? Are we going to do a nose? Are we going to have every note? I don't know. But, and that's not something that we need to discuss with this committee, but it's, like, do it so that you, you want to do that now or you want to kick it off. Then that's happened today, or it'll probably happen next year, and it needs to happen soon.
Soon.
Because most of, maybe it starts getting this little...
Yep.
There's a lot of discussion about the long, it's already been announced here, the developers call in it. I think we just need to confirm that plan, if we really need it, or if we not need it. If we don't need it, whatever conditions, then you can back first to consider something other than.
Right.
So those are kind of things, you know, the property to the town center, or much turning things up and down, two oh five, if we want concentrated or not concentrated. Um, and they're maybe, you know, they're maybe on something else as they begin to committee discussion and maybe there's other areas that's to be addressed, but, um, to maybe, I see.
So I've seen this, so this group of four and...
Well, and actually, you're right, you're right, you're right, I was thinking group of five, and only this five, it's not, but we may want, if there's someone on the economic development side, because you're kind of in that sort of road, you could be, like, if you're, especially if someone on that video that has that background, that can get it wide enough, because it's a man in business, it, you know? We can all make plans and, uh, it's great, but I mean, if they're warm, has a word, have a, you like it, so, you know, it'd be nice to have that perspective too, from that, someone on the economic development side, that could also, pretty good, because that's, two oh five would be, I think, be a little robust, and I think it's going to be good.
Right.
But it's going to be total.
Absolutely.
I'm sorry, I, I think that if you don't, uh, personally, especially if they have some background.
No worries, this is already about the minutes that y'all voted undefeated that it was going to be council member, Mayor Bloom and council member, Washington Committee, so don't worry, it's already minutes.
Oh, we're a collective.
Yeah. Well, unfortunately, I don't want to do that to them. Um, are you interested?
Uh, actually, I, I think, I'm pretty sure that Bloom is interested in doing it.
Yeah, but I'm not asking about Bloom, I'm asking about you.
Oh, you know, I think I have a lot on my plate between the performances and the veterans thing and roads conformation.
Mr. Dog? Oh, Charles, you're... All right, there's one. And you said three.
Can be three council members.
Uh, you don't want to, you don't want to... I know. Okay.
We didn't need counsel from P and Z and Nashua, and all that, I guess, maybe we just did that.
They can nominate in there. You know what else I'm not playing? Lisa just wanted to make sure. Um, I'm going to put Mr. Bloom on it at the moment, but I'm also going to put Mr. Hodges on as an alternate at the moment. I would prefer to see Mr. Hodges in there, but he also has quite a bit in his personal life as far as his business practice that may take away from him. I want to make sure that, you know, he's lived here for quite some time, he's been a business owner in the area, so he brings an insight into this that I think will be.
All right, so, uh, just for clarification, you're appointing Mr. Dog and Mr. Bloom So just for clarification, you're appointing Mr. Dogg and Mr. Bloom and Mr. Hodges as an alternate? And just also for clarification, this is an advisory type of committee, only...
The way you had to explain it to me.
Right, so they won't be made a part of that decision, they won't be conferring, or bringing it back to you.
Bringing back suggestions, ideas, right, Mr. Brown? And do we know, have we made a decision on who, who the two were from P and Z yet?
No.
Okay, that's fine.
I think a little bit to develop, they've been there for a while already, so we can manage a nice one, so we put one next to general, but that's just a couple people. And hopefully, by then, we'll have a non-development back in the country, so maybe we can get enough reports from there.
And part of that is, yes, Mr. Bloom may be interested as part of the economic development, but due to his work commitment to the full-time firefighter, he may be a miscommit. So I want to make sure we have at least two there, so if one's not here, the other can step in. I don't want to over commit guys with what they already have going on. But I, I value his opinion in this.
We're probably going to be in line for Thanksgiving anyway, and P and Z is the 21st. Oh, is there a way to have them organic by, you know? We just need to get a couple of people to learn.
But we have to have everybody listed for that, so who else is going to be a part of that?
We may have one, one participant from P and Z, so I think they probably should be there.
That's fine, and that's fine.
I would just need if there was a way else out there, so we can, could we...
You can't have a Christmas party, if you don't have a date for a Christmas, that's a rule, right?
True. Well, you've got, you've got the ones from us, when's P and Z meet next again?
November 21st.
Of November.
I think it starts very early, it's probably December.
Can you, between now and then, can you send anything to them to see who would be interested?
Sure.
And if they have to draw straws between them to come up with two, because there may be more interest than you anticipated, see what we can do. If you would, please. All right, moving on to six point eight, discussion in action regarding the possibility of rescheduling or canceling regular meetings during 2019 holiday season. Lisa and I talked about this. The second council meeting in November is the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. That's usually the week where people either have family coming in, or want to travel, because they want to go see family. My recommendation is we cancel that meeting, that second meeting for November. And then the second meeting for December is actually Christmas Eve. How many of you want to be here for Christmas Eve? I don't, my kids are grown, and they don't really care, but I don't think my grandson will. You know, right now, he kind of rules the roost.
I bet they care, I bet they care.
I think we should have...
They're used to me working Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, so that officers with younger kids had time to spend with their family, because they know what it was like when I was a youngster, and my dad was a, an officer. But my grandson kind of rules the roost now, as the youngest, so I wouldn't do that to him.
He would think, Christmas could be tomorrow, if he would care.
Yeah, but still. I would, you know, he kind of gets to rule me, but I won't admit that anywhere else. All right, guys, so here's, here's the thing. I, I'm looking for a motion to cancel the second meetings in November and December. Got a motion?
I'll make a motion to cancel the November 26th council meeting and the December 24th.
All right, do I have a second? All right, I have a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Show that unanimous? That is done. All right, updates, discussion, directions to staff. I don't know of any updates, we pretty much discussed everything here on what we need to do moving forward. I, yeah, I can't think of anything right there. MC 50 is coming up in, a week from this, a week from this Saturday? The 19th, in the afternoon. Make sure we're, we're plugging that to anybody that wants to hear, or is willing to listen, that we have our 50th anniversary of the city coming up on, on the 19th, from 1 to 4 in the afternoon.
Yes, it was posted today, it was sent to a couple of news outlets as well, and they promoted it for us.
As far as reports or announcements from me, you know, MC 50's coming up, Halloween's coming up. So just remember, come Halloween, we got little kids dressed up in many, many different fashions, running around wanting candy. They may not be paying attention to you driving, or whatever. Be weary of kids running around on Halloween, and the pranks. Not that I ever did anything like that when I was their age, but the pranksters, and then the kids looking for candy. Veterans Day coming up, you know, that's another big one that we're going to have here. Can't think of anything other than that, is there anything I'm missing?
The trash industry, extreme green.
Yes, I'm sorry, you did put something up here. So, October 26th, Saturday, made to do our extreme green event through our trash service. Is this posted on the website with all of those?
Yes, it's posted on the website, it's on Facebook. Citizens can you remember, you can be a CWD customer?
Yes.
And they need to agree with some kind of invoice or...
Something to show proof that they're a customer of them, yes.
And ID as well.
Okay, and an ID.
And they're going to be shoulderless? Do they need their own friend, or company, or do they need to be shoulderless?
I think company will be the order of that, or something like that. Yes, which is a Baptist church, they've got a lot of...
That's the big one, you slide down. All right, yes, the extreme, extreme green event that is coming up. Ms. Kipper, do you have anything? I know you just discussed the veterans.
No, but I do, I do want to have a, a public announcement about something. There's a program on the 8th of November called D-Day for B-Day. And one of our local dentists is doing free dental exams and minor dental care for veterans. And if they're, if, if any veterans out there are interested, if they could go ahead and contact me through Lisa. It's on Veteran, it's on November 8th.
Okay.
And it's Dr. Stan Lawrence's dental practice. And I believe, Councilmember Hodges has some of his staff working there as well. So it's an all-volunteer dental service. And last year, I think we serviced around 85 veterans. And, but you do have to have a reservation to go, and all you need to do is contact me, and I will get you pointed in the right direction on who you need to talk to to get that dental care. So for general public, I think that's really good information to know, and it's also on Facebook.
You made me remember something when you said that name. Another thing that is coming up is Saturday, November 9th. Granted, it's not within our city, but it is another veterans deal between the Terry Fisher Post, the American Legion, and Sideways Barbecue down at the Harbor. We'll be having a tribute to veterans with a concert going on from, I think it's from 1 to 6, down at the Harbor. And they're going to have a couple of top main acts playing music. So that's another big celebration that's coming up. Tell them I can thank Mr. Hodges. I know, yeah, Trudy's not here, but like, like we were saying, MC 50's coming up a week from Saturday. She's working on that, I know we're going to have something coming up for Christmas as well. I don't want to steal the thunder, the ideas and all that that are going on with that. Guys, we're trying to bring back community. You know, I listen to a lot of people, and I, I grew up with the chili cook-offs, and the local dances, and the local rodeos, and, and things like that, and some of that's missing now. You know, people have said, hey, what happened to the fall chili cook-off? You know, a little barbecue get-together at the fire station or anything like that, and we're starting to bring that back. We're bringing it all back at once, no, absolutely not. But we're trying to bring back some of that community as quickly as we can, without overburdening everyone. You know, I think it's very important that we bring that unity of the community back, and we bring those events back. You know, is everybody going to participate? Probably not, but those that it's dear to to be there. And some people just show up for this free food. Mayor Pro Tim is not here, he is traveling, he is our representative of the PML conference, to go down there and listen to that stuff this year. I know there's something else I'm missing, but I can't think of it. Mr. Dogg, do you have anything? I think that's going to be it, guys, we've met everything on the agenda for tonight. So at this point in time, it is now 7:31, this meeting is adjourned. I still know I'm missing something, I think I would have lost it.
I couldn't remember the date of the concert, that's why I didn't miss it.
The 9th. So you're...
I forgot to turn the lights on again.
You did that, I know you loved that. Where's that photo?
Never, never.
Where's the photo set?
Yeah, never.
The light for that is outside in the electric room on that.
We would need a photo film that's on, stays over like an hour.
Well, my best part of it, I didn't even get out of my pickup, to get into my squad car, get ready to go.